Let me call this meeting of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees to order. Please rise. And Trustee Carol, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. And Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Clerk.
Present.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Present.
Trustee DeCostela.
Present.
Trustee Carroll.
Present.
Clerk Reyes, here. Supervisor Wilt.
Present. Okay, we have a quorum, and so we will proceed to the agenda. First item is the approval of the minutes of November 21st. That was our last full town board meeting. What is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of November 21st.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Clerk, seconded by Trustee DeCostela, to approve the minutes of November 21st. Are there any additions, corrections, or discussion?
I have a couple corrections, please.
Sure.
Page two, under approval of minutes, second, motion made by Trustee DeCostela, and then underneath that it says, "Motion, Trustee Clerk." It does not reflect the same.
Oh, I see, on the second, second set of minutes for the November 7th?
Correct. On page five.
Wait, did you make the motion?
That I don't recall. I'm sorry. I apologize for that.
Okay, so do you want?
Whatever.
I don't recall either.
What's your pleasure? Sorry, I don't recall.
You need to either change.
Let's see.
One or the other.
Either the beginning, it's the second, yeah, it's the second set of minutes.
Oh, I see, yeah, with DeCostela. Sorry about that.
That's right.
Okay, go down.
So the second, so.
Did you want to say DeCostela?
Okay.
Page five. Towards the bottom of the page, bless you. Trustee Highlandbach moved to approve the request, and then it says, "Motion, Trustee Clerk," same type.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, so again, is it?
No, that's a good catch. And you found it twice.
It was in the motion to.
There's one more.
To approve the private party. So again, would that be Highlandbach?
Yes.
So that will be corrected?
Yes, already correct.
There's one more on page eight, please.
Holy cow, must've been asleep.
He's overly efficient.
Adjournment. Where is that at?
Adjournment.
On page eight.
That's DeCostela.
Yeah, well, then who seconded?
Clerk.
Okay, so those should be reversed.
Good catches.
Thanks, ma'am.
He put that in there just to see if you read the minutes.
Fine job of doing that, Clerk Reyes, making sure that we're on the ball. Good job.
I would send it correct.
So then the motion is corrected?
Okay, so you move, I'm sorry, so with those corrections in mind, does the mover approve?
Yeah.
Move, as corrected?
As corrected.
And second?
Second.
All right. So I have a motion by Trustee Clerk, seconded by Trustee DeCostela, to approve the minutes of November 21st as corrected. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Next set of minutes are the December 5th minutes. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion where we approve the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting for December 5th, 2023.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Highlandbach, seconded by Trustee Carroll, to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole from December 5th. Are there any additions, corrections, or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. All right, next order of business is new business, and we have an application for a community partnership award from the Brookfield Police Department. If the chief would please step to the podium, identify yourself, and then give us a brief summary of what it is that you're looking for.
Good evening, Supervisor and trustees. Thank you so much for giving me a few minutes to present this grant application to you all. My name is Michael Curville, the Chief of Police with the Brookfield Police Department. I've been with the Brookfield Police Department in my 18th year, and I've had the honor and the privilege to be leading this department in the community of Brookfield and whatnot. So I just want to thank you again. And so I'm here before you this evening to apply and to seek for a grant. It's regarding a device called the JAMR radar. You know, any police chief in Riverside, I know, you know, I've been texting and communicating with, you know, Director Buckley a little bit ago, and he has a lot of traffic complaints, as does Brookfield and all of our area communities. I would say, in my position of leadership frankly, it's probably one of the most prevalent complaints or asks that come my way to my office, you know, and thankfully, that's, you know, as far as severity of kind of things that we have to deal with, I would, that's okay. But at the same time, traffic is, can become a very serious matter. People can get hurt, and certainly worse than that. As far as the frequency that this happens for me, you know, on average, we get about three to four complaints a week, sometimes even 12, 15, or up to 20 a month during the, for whatever. It's hard to truly narrow down the times as far as when it gets really busy or low, but spring and fall tend to be when the weather warms up, people get out, and you start to see more traffic and hustle and bustle. So it is a very common complaint that's made my way. You know, frankly, even when I'm in the public, it's something that I'm approached by residents on a regular basis. We had our holiday tree lighting a week ago, and, you know, I was stopped at least once or twice regarding specifically traffic on Washington between Prairie and the high school. That is unfortunately, and because our students, our young people are making their trekking from school, whether it's RB High School or Hollywood Elementary School home, it's a common problem where you have, and sometimes it's the teenagers themselves, but sometimes it's just adults trying to, you know, other people trying to traverse through, maybe using Washington as a bypass. And we find there being a 25 mile per hour, 20 mile per hour in the school zone, we do have lots of instances where people are speeding out of that area. So I don't, certainly I don't want to belabor it. I know that you see my application, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. The point of this device, and I, just to end with this, it is, it's a conspicuous device that gets attached to a pole. When we get traffic complaints, traditionally speaking, we generate what we call a traffic detail. We have an officer go to that location, spend time monitoring, once a shift, twice a shift, sometimes 10, 5, 10, 15, 20 minutes at a time, tracking speeds, watching for other type of reckless driving behavior. It takes, it takes up resources. And there's a different response when a marked squad car is sitting there, as opposed to when you put this, you know, it's typically a black box that sits on a pole or on a speed sign, and it monitors all the traffic speeds that are coming to and from that area. What that does is it generates a report, and especially when we have complaints that come in about speeding in that area, it provides us objective data, data that's not driven by what would happen when an officer is there to show what we really are facing in that area. So I hope that that makes sense. Please, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's ultimately what we're hoping to acquire should this board approve this.
So you don't have any of these at this point?
We do not. We currently utilize officers in their marked squad cars, and then we have fixed radar units in the squad cars to do that type of monitoring.
It takes, you get a lot of complaints from the citizens, and, you know, they're saying that these cars are traveling 45, 50 miles down the roadway. And have you tested one of these devices?
We have.
And have you tested it from a resident complaint?
Yes, sir.
And did that resident complaint, was it valid?
It was not.
Okay. So you would tie up several officers, sometimes two, three times a shift, going over there, and this device could show the resident, okay, here, you know, you've got an example of it here. You've tested this device. What other town has the device?
Actually, Riverside has a device, North Riverside has a device, and in the instance that you were asking about, trustee, that was from, we borrowed that from North Riverside, and we were able to deploy that about this time last year actually, to, you know, to address a speeding vehicle complaint, an occurring one, and one that I've tried very, very hard to mitigate with this resident, frankly, communications that lasted close to two years. And I will tell you that it was this, a combination of this device, and then ultimately what we did create in Brookfield is a traffic safety committee, which took the data from the device that we borrowed, that we deployed out there for about two weeks period of time. That, and then an engineering traffic study that was able to finally close this matter, to say that the request for a reduction in speed, the request for additional signage was not warranted based on the objective data that we were able to procure.
And that, just that one case, how many man-hours did you think you could have, you would have saved?
Conservatively, I would tell you, and I make, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, overplay this, conservatively, I'd say about 100 hours. I have, you know, I had to tabulate even the time. That's staff time for patrol officers, for myself, because I didn't want this resident to not feel heard. We communicated back and forth. I have about 54 pages of emails that I have gone back and forth in trying to, you know, address this matter. I do believe the ability to have a device such as this will really be able to resolve, or at least come to a conclusion in situations like this much, much sooner.
So these don't issue citations, they just generate data for your decision-making?
That is correct. And we wouldn't issue citations based on that either. Not that it's capturing license plates or individual vehicles, it's giving us generalized data based on the time that it's sitting there. But what it will do is, if we do know that there is a, you know, objectively, a recurring problem now when an officer is not there, it means we're going to deploy more targeted enforcement of an officer, and then, you know, if it's appropriate, we'll be issuing citations.
I have two questions, please. The first one, is it easily deployable to different areas through the village?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's a relatively small device. I'm going to say approximately 12 by 12.
Same ones that we use then. And then the other question, is it real-time reporting, or is it something that you have to get sent to you from their service?
I'll be honest with you, trustee, my understanding is that it's something that you take off and, you know, then download the data. But I could be wrong on that, because truthfully, what the package that they have created for us includes a laptop, so I would, I would venture to say there's probably some level of connectivity.
Okay.
But at the end of the day.
Readily available.
Yeah, it's something that we would, we would be able to go and retain.
Yeah, you don't have to wait for the company to give you a report.
No, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I don't mean, I don't mean as for speed, but it, yeah, it's readily available.
Absolutely.
You know, within a day or something, you have to deploy.
The laptop comes with it, it looks like.
It looks like, it comes within, from what I read in there, all the upgrades are on there.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Updates and all that.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? I would just point out that because Brookfield is also a taxing body, we do not grant the money directly to the, to the other taxing body. What we would do is we would purchase this. So if you would arrange for it, they either invoice us in advance, or however, we could work that out afterwards if this is approved.
Absolutely, thank you.
What's the power, sorry, what's the power source on it?
It's a, it's a battery powered.
Battery powered? Does it work off a solar den, or?
I believe you just charge, because there, I've never seen it solar.
So it has a charging?
Yeah, but you charge it up.
Seven to 10 days.
Somewhere I saw something about it being a lightweight one, so that.
It is, it is.
Okay.
I make a motion where we approve the grant for the Brookfield Police Department in the amount of $5,341 for their traffic CAT 2 Plus JAMR.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Trustee Highlandbach, seconded by Trustee Carroll, to approve the purchase of a CAT 2 Plus JAMR, what is it, monitoring device for the Village of Brookfield Police Department. Is there, are there any further questions or any discussion? Then hearing none, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. That's a carried motion, so get in touch with me to let us know how you'll want that taken care of.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks for coming in, chief. Have a happy holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks. All right. Next order of business is the special event request.
Supervisor Wilt, can we see what our guests want?
Sure, would you like to move up public comment to?
Yes, if that's possible.
All right, that'd be fine. You would step to the podium if you have something to present?
Too bad.
You did sign in, right?
No.
Afterwards, please make sure you do, so we have information.
Hi, Amy Jaksick. I live in Riverside, and I'm here for two reasons to thank you guys. The first being, I help run the Riverside Farmers Market, and even though it's not a grant given to us, you guys are generous enough to fund vouchers to ensure that hungry residents have access to fresh foods. And I want to thank Supervisor Wilt in particular, because I don't know if you guys realize how much time she spends ensuring that the program goes off without a hitch, but she is at that market 18 weeks, just like I am. So she's there ensuring that the program goes off well, and that redemption is handled correctly, and I'm just so grateful to her in particular, because we've done this together for several years now. So thank you for all your time, and thank you to you guys for ensuring that township residents have access to fresh foods. And then the second reason I'm here is another thank you to you guys, because I'm on the board of the Riverside Friends of the Library, and you guys were generous enough to waive the fee to use the township auditorium. When we had a fundraiser there in October, we raised over $5,000, and every penny is going to go back into the library used specifically for programming, which obviously is available to anybody who lives within the township and beyond. So thank you for waiving that fee, because it's, the money we raised is really going to go to a good cause, because we've never been able to so robustly fund programming in the past. So thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for all you guys do.
Thanks for taking the time out to come and see.
Thank you for recognizing that.
Very nice.
It's two reasons.
Amy, would you mind signing in on the sheet?
Thank you so much for coming in, for your kind words.
Thank you.
All right, then back to new business, item B, which is a special event request for baptismal reception on January 20th. You have it in your packet, and they are aware of the need for insurance, and you see the fees that will be charged. Is there any, are there any questions?
And we don't have a policy about how many Riverside residents are attending, right? It's just the person renting has to live within the.
The person renting has to, yes, has to live within the community, and it looks like it's the household of the family of the baptismal person.
I make a move that we approve the special event request for the baptismal on 2024.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee DeCostela, to approve the request of the auditorium for Saturday, the 20th of January. Any further discussion? If not, then I would ask for a roll call.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion is carried. Next item is the approval of resolutions for appointments to the mental health board. We have one current member of the board, who happens to also be the chairman of the board at this time, is, he was appointed midterm, I believe, so his term is expiring at the end of the year, and this would be for Adam Wilt of Riverside to be appointed for the traditional four-year term, starting January 1st, 2024, and ending on December 31st of 2027. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion where we approve Adam Wilt for the four-year term on the mental health board.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Highlandbach, seconded by Trustee Clark, to approve, to approve the appointment of Adam Wilt of Riverside to the mental health board for a four-year term, starting January 1st. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I will abstain, even though I'm making the appointment, just to, just perform a. The other appointment is for a new member of this board, for Cynthia Ketchmarczuk, and she is of North Riverside, and it would also be for the same term, January 1, 2024, until December 31, 2027. She is, she is involved in mental health. She actually works for a division of NAMI that we do not contract with. She, she works for NAMI DuPage. She is trained in various, and certified for various mentoring or training. That would be for mental health first aid, as well as, for adults as well as youth. And she, she was interviewed by myself and Trustee Highlandbach, and she showed a great deal of enthusiasm and organizational skills and such. I think that she'll be an asset to the board. So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve this nomination.
I make a motion that we approve Cynthia Ketchmarczuk to the Riverside Township Mental Health Board.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Trustee Highlandbach, seconded by Trustee Carroll, to approve the appointment of Cynthia Ketchmarczuk of North Riverside to the mental health board. Any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. And we have now an action on an ordinance to amend the township's paid leave policy. As you've probably heard, there's been some changes in state law, and I would ask if our, if our counsel can give us a little insight here?
Sure, thank you, Supervisor. You may have seen, I'm not sure if the township officials of Illinois put much out, but the Illinois Municipal League and some other organizations have published some information on this, and they were fighting it at certain points too. But it is, it is a new law that goes into effect in the new year called the Paid for, Paid Leave for All Workers Act. And it essentially guarantees 40 hours, at least 40 hours, time off for all employees. It applies to private employers and most local governments. Park districts and school districts were accepted, but townships are included. So we had to incorporate this time off into your existing leave policy, so we took a look at that. Fortunately, you already give that amount of time off to even new employees as vacation. We did have to expand or alter your policy to include part-time employees. It applies to full-time and part-time. So we added a section of your leave policy that essentially gives them 40 hours of personal time to use during the year. It does not get carried over, but they get it, it'll, it's a lump sum at the beginning of the year, which is one of the options the state law gave you. When you do that, you can choose not to allow them to carry it over. As part-time employees didn't have any benefits prior to that, that seemed the appropriate way to go. In terms of full-time employees, there are some aspects of this time off that the new law requires that didn't quite match the vacation time off requirement, so we had to alter that a little bit. You're usually, according to the state law, you're able to use these in smaller blocks than you might require for a vacation policy, where, you know, you might require a minimum of a half day or four hours. State law says they can use as small as two-hour increments on this. So we, the way I drafted this was to craft it as they can convert vacation time into personal time that would fall under this act and comply with it. So you do, I think you have copies in the binders. It essentially adds two paragraphs to your existing time off policy. But, you know, without having to go into the dark, dark details on this, it didn't take too much to adjust your existing policy so that it complies with this new law. So, and I think these changes do that.
And that will apply to, to the assessor's office as well.
There's been a lot of confusion about the local governments do not like this. The Illinois Municipal League was fighting it, trying to push back the start date, maybe accept other types of governments and smaller bodies like townships. None of that came to pass, at least as of yet. So this does go into effect.
January 1?
January 1.
For us, the biggest change is that part-timers and hourly employees get that, because before this, they didn't get any paid time off. So if a part-timer needed time off, they took it as unpaid time.
So I do have a question regarding that aspect of it. For part-time employees, are a minimum hours that they have to work to qualify?
They're, they're entitled to it no matter what. There is no qualifying amount of time. You can structure this so that you earn this time off based on hours worked, but if you do it that way, you have to allow them to be able to carry it over from year to year.
And accumulate.
And accumulate.
Which would entail a payout, a potential payout.
Potential payouts as well. So there were, and then that's, you know, counting for that and tracking that is a much more onerous task than just giving it as a lump sum upfront. So, yes, there is, it is subject to abuse from a new employee to jump on this and then leave, I suppose, but.
There was also an option where they could, they could accumulate it, but then it would be like they got an hour for every 40 hours of work or something like that.
There's an equation of how they, they earn an hour for every.
With the tab, the tabulation.
Right, right.
So when they, for a part-time employee, when they, you know, request four hours off or eight hours for the day, they're not getting paid. Is that correct? They just are entitled to this time?
Right.
This is paid time off.
No, this is, I'm sorry, now, now they're not getting paid, but this will, they will get paid now.
Okay.
Up to 40 hours.
Up to 40 hours a year. And we've structured it so they cannot carry it over beyond their anniversary date, as a part-time employee.
And they can take it in incrementals, or they can take it all at once and then like a week off?
They can take as small as two hours, or they can take the whole, whole shebang.
They could get, like, my part-timers are basically about 20 hours a week, so that could be two weeks off.
Unfortunately, the state law says you can't ask them why they're using it. You can't have an onerous notice requirement that, you know, requires a month's notice and that type of thing. You can't ask them for a doctor's note when they come back. You can't retaliate against them. So it's really, this is a very pro-employee thing.
Absolutely.
And it's just, it's very structured to their benefit.
Yeah, and so then our. Yeah, and so then our full-time employees that are salaried, they get this paid off, too?
They would get it paid off.
They're already earning it.
They already, right off the bat, get a week, five days of vacation, even for a first-year employee. And that, that goes up after that. But, but it, as we talked about, there's some distinctions about these hours versus vacation hours, right? And so.
So this is truly PTO.
Right, so you can convert your time off into this so that you can use it in a smaller increment and, and so forth. And, you know, to satisfy some of those acts require, requirements. You have strict, I guess you'd call them stricter requirements.
So this starts the day that, like, we had a part-time employee starting, you know, on January 2nd. This starts right on January 2nd. They don't have to build up.
Correct.
Date of employment.
There was some, you know, for collective bargaining agreements, there was kind of a, a further date down the road that, you know, this applied. But there wasn't anything like that that applied specifically to this township.
And the legislature hasn't even come up more with rules. There's still, you know, it's still a bit in flux, but right now, to be in compliance is better to.
The Department of Labor is going to oversee this. And there, there's supposed to be a posting that government bodies or employers in general will have to post about these rights. And I don't know that one's been developed specifically yet. But, you know, there are fines for non-compliance and so forth. So it's, I guess it'll remain to be seen what kind of complaints or enforcement comes into play. But it's, it's a new thing for everybody.
We currently go by calendar, we don't go by calendar year, we go by employment year.
Okay.
So everything begins when, like, if you start June 1st.
Right.
You, now, you would earn that right at the beginning as well. You would, you would be credited for that so that if something happened and you're hoping that people don't not show up for the first whole week, right?
You're hoping they've applied for a job because they need the job and will hopefully stick around in that. But I, I think the lump sum is the, the better way to go in terms of the accrual. It's just for tracking purposes, would be a huge headache. And then if you go that way, you have to allow them the right to accumulate those hours and carry them over from year to year.
Regarding that, what, would they be allowed to carry over the 40 every year? Or is there, or is there a max that they can carry?
Yeah, it's escaping me if there was a max. But yes, if they didn't use their 40 hours for their first year and got to their anniversary date, at least for the first year, I believe they could carry that whole 40 over into the next year. And so.
And continually accumulate that?
Continually, that maybe to a point there was a maximum, but I, that's escaping me. It off the top of my head, what, if that was, if that was in the statute.
As, as, as far as I know, as a rule, usually employers limit it to 80 hours to what you can, you can carry over. But you would have to use that first in your, in your subsequent year.
This is, it's an onerous, you know, mandate from the state that, that it's putting on, you know, to include part-time employees that normally wouldn't earn any of these benefits. You have to accommodate the, the law to, you know.
I, I understand.
Sadly, I mean, that's, there's been a pushback on it, but it, it is going into effect.
And municipalities especially, I think, have been fighting it because of.
I think park districts and school districts, just because of the seasonal nature of a large group of their employees were accepted from it, is my guess, but.
They were exempt, you said?
Exempted from, correct, park districts and school districts. Applies to everyone else.
Just to, they said you can't carry over this.
This, this one, they can't. The way, the way.
The way we structured it, they cannot.
The way it was structured here, they can't accumulate. There was another way to do it, which they would be able to accumulate and carry over.
That's in the state law, not in your, not in your policy.
This is, this is the policy that we're planning to adopt.
To keep track of the hours.
Most, most people, or most government bodies are, are doing the lump sum option because it gives you more control over not allowing them to unreasonably, excessively carry over hours from year to year.
But you don't have to keep, as the employer, all right, well, they work this amount of times and now they have this many, like, figuring out how much they're accruing minus using, that's gotta be.
Yeah, you would have to, right, if you went that route, the accrual route, where you earn an hour of time off for every week you work or something like that, you know?
No, that's, that's math, Tim, I see.
And then, and then you gotta let them carry over if they don't use it all.
It says in here they can't carry it over.
Correct.
That's correct.
The way we're structuring it, they can't. If we just, if we did it as everybody gets it under the old rules, then if they had to earn it, we, we would have to then carry it off.
Okay.
The state law gives you two options of how to give the employees. So as a lump sum upfront, which is how we've structured it in the ordinance you have in front of you. Or the other option was accrual gradually for, you know, as they work a week, they get another hour of paid time off.
Okay, I understand.
When you do it that way, you have to let them carry it over from year to year and let them accumulate it.
Okay.
If you do the lump sum option, you have the decision, the discretion to say, no, you, you use it or you lose it.
I do believe TOI is fighting this and they were, you know, trying to get it start on a later date.
Yeah, yeah.
But they were, you know.
Yeah, that was, in the fall session, none of that was successful.
Yeah.
If something happens later, we can always pass a new ordinance to comply with the changed law.
Yeah, if something's not working for you, we can tweak this. But the way it's drafted, I think you're, you're in compliance with the, you know, the terms of the new law. But well, everyone's kind of struggling with it and how to enforce it and there's.
So we have to be.
There's some mystery about it. The Department of Labor has not been exactly consistent with.
Right.
What they've offered as advice of how to apply this and put it into effect and so forth, so.
And we have to be compliant by January 1st.
Correct, correct. So I, I think we've crafted this to do the minimal, to get you in compliance, but.
And simplest.
The simplest and most straightforward, I think, is the tact that we've taken here.
Also payroll doesn't have to be so complicated.
Right.
Yeah.
This seems to be, kind of, again, the lump sum seems what most people, local governments are choosing.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, then can I have a motion to approve this?
I made the motion.
I have a motion by trustee Carroll. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee DeCostola to approve ordinance number 2023-9, an ordinance amending the township's leave policy. Any other discussion? Hearing none, then would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Heilandbach.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostola.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, on to. Communications? Are there any communications?
We have a few. First, we have a thank you letter from the Riverside Public Library. Thank you, thanking the township for its support of a recent grant request that allowed them to purchase three iPads and three iPad holders. They're very appreciative and thank the township for their support. Second, we have a thank you letter from Joe Inigaz, who is a decennial, decennial committee member. And he thanked Supervisor Wilt and the board for allowing him to serve on the Decennial Committee on Local Government Efficiency. He's indicated that he was honored and humbled for the opportunity and contribute to the improvement of local government. Finally, we have a little flyer related to the Riverside Township Food Pantry Drive. And it's a, it's a colorful flyer that indicates that one can submit food donations for, at Riverside Foods and that they benefit the township food pantry.
Thank you. None of that requires action, so thank you for the correspondence. All right, supervisor's report. So I did observe, as I was pulling together the decennial committee report for final, for its final form, that there's one aspect that was discussed, and it's probably in the meeting minutes, but we didn't deal with it in the report. The committee toured the building and discussed maintenance and infrastructure issues of the town hall and asked for an analysis of the cost of maintaining the town hall. Preliminary analysis showed the annual cost of owning the building varies as emergency repairs and replacements are needed. I did not provide the committee with the actual numbers. I calculated there were still missing parts. Large-scale unnecessary repairs and replacements like the roof will be coming due in the near future. And I believe the decennial committee report should perhaps recommend to the board an analysis of the building's current and future costs to send up, to set up a funding plan. In terms of efficiencies, that seems like something we'll do. I'll communicate that to the entire committee for their approval before the final draft is submitted to the, to the county. But I wanted you all to know that that's, that's a missing link I found in that. The food pantry is about to benefit, as you just heard, from Riverside Foods, which is now conducting an annual collection. It's been going on since last week, and we only saw it publicized this week. But next week, we expect to receive a load from that drive. Last year, they brought a truckload of things over. St. Peter and Paul's Lutheran Church also brought off, over a carload of items this week. And although we've received donations in the box in the hallway, I want to remind everyone that we cannot hand out items that have passed the expiration date. When folks drop outdated items in the donation box, that slows our process for sharing and it simply forces us to throw them out. Although some people make question the meaningfulness of the dates on packaging, if we ever want to get into a larger network like the Greater Chicagoland Food Depository, we cannot distribute food past the printed dates. So it's a good policy to, to stick with now. Pantry clients continue to receive holiday gift cards if they have not yet received one. So far, we have handed out 61 cards, and we have a few more as a backup in case more clients that haven't received them come in. If they are not distributed, we can use them to purchase replenishment food for the pantry. So I'm not worried about that. Please note that I bought those, you'll, in the warrants, you may observe that I bought those with the township credit card. And on the warrants, it appears under Town Programs. The food pantry money all comes from the general funds anyway, even though we have a separate account, just to keep it manageable. But it made no sense to transfer money from the general fund to the bank account to the food pantry just to pay for gift cards, you know, then have to replenish again. Assistance this past month has required a lot of time spent with residents needing assistance in one form or another. This typically happens when the villages crack down and post water shut-off notices. And of course, once, once they come to me, there's a lot of conversation and counseling about various help available to them besides just giving forms and considering the application. So it's quite time-consuming. The holiday stroll brought a lot of people to the town hall, but we've reached out to the chamber committee on this to split up the school choruses next year because there were way too many people in that room at once. Once the concert was over, I mean, everybody cleared out, I think you were in that room. It was literally standing room only and out into the hallway. Got very warm in there, everybody was uncomfortable. And I frankly was waiting down here for squeaking floors to, to start challenging it. It was not a safe situation. So we've asked them and they said they'll be incorporating that into their, you know, review of this year. And what happened was that once, once the show, that program was over, people cleared out and then the magician that, you know, had a very small audience. And as a matter of fact, people were stopping in the building later in the evening, coming to see the choruses. And it's like, they were right at the beginning. So I'd like to break that up and see if we can't split them into two. Anyway, I went to a meeting of the local St. Vincent de Paul Society last week so that we, we could learn more about each other's assistance programs. I think we all have a better understanding of each other's processes and they're really pretty similar. On some cases, we can work together to get the problem resolved. That's especially the case when the amount needed to fix the situation in emergency assistance situations exceeds that level that we've set. And, but in combination with their help, we can resolve the problem and give the people a fresh start in that particular area. Trustee Heilandbach and I interviewed five candidates for the upcoming openings, or the openings on the mental health board last week. All of them had quite a passion for mental health, but we did make the choices that you've, the one you've heard tonight. And there's another vacancy that will be opening up soon. And we already know that, you know, who we're going to appoint then. I also attended the seniors' Christmas party that trustee Clark ran at the Riverside Golf Club. Good food and entertainment. And just as a little note as well, the warrants look like, you know, we still haven't gotten tax money, but, not the warrants, but the financials look like we haven't gotten tax money. But that was as of the end of November. And I can happily report that since the 1st of December, we have received over 208,000 in taxes for the general fund. So most of that went right into the, the max savings accounts. So it's earning interest, so we get, we'll bet while we have some money there. And that's all I have at this point, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a few questions. The 61 gift cards.
Yep.
Is that including both Thanksgiving and Christmas?
Yes, yes, because we agreed to give one holiday card of $50. And so if they got one in November, they did not get one in December. But some people don't show up in November and then in December, you know, just the way their, their schedule fits. If they come at the end of the month, they may have missed that holiday, whatever. So we still have a few stragglers here and there that have not yet gotten the card. They might have come a few months ago and then things were okay, and now they're back. So the 61, actually, I had purchased 60. And the one we had, when we were running low at one point, I had, last year, when Riverside Foods delivered all the foods, they also delivered a couple, a few gift cards. So I, one day, when we were short on the Riverside ones, we just gave out two $25 gift cards to Riverside Foods. And then I purchased a few extras that we've got, you know, just in case any more stragglers come. But as I said, I can use those to purchase food for the food pantry.
My second question was, you said that not a lot of people were at the magician show?
Well, you know, I did take a look at the video because I didn't get a chance to go up there. I was down here directing traffic. And it looked like for the first show, he might have had 40 or 50 people ultimately, which when you've had it set up for every chair that you own, it doesn't look like it's, it's quite the crowd. Second show probably had maybe 30, so. I mean, it's, it's something. But I think that if there were ongoing other shows going on in between, you know, even the magician suggested, you know, maybe if we could, you know, bring in some other people. Because, as I said, there were, especially there were like young people who I felt like were the classmates of people, came in later in the day to, oh, we want to go see the, the concert. And it was like, they finished hours ago, you know, so.
So we paid for that magician.
Yes, yes.
So my, my question is, is it still, you know, if they ask us to pay for it again next year, is it worth our money to do that?
That's part of our town programs.
Well, we do it as part of our town programs. And I don't think, I mean, I think we would still want to do it, but I would like to see a change in how that program runs just so that even, even just the choir concert, and maybe the choir master won't want to split that up. But I'm sorry, that room was, they were like sardines in there.
Well.
Yeah.
It's a safety hazard.
Exactly.
It was raining, too.
Yeah.
So everybody.
Yeah.
Was hitting the goose Island truck or the, they had the beer truck right there, hitting that, coming up watching the kids. It was quick. And then they went out.
Yeah.
Just said beer.
And as people were leaving, I was calling to people, we have another show. We have a magic show, real good magic show. And actually, those who stayed were all very complimentary. They, people, adults were walking out going, I don't know how he did that. Yeah, no, they were impressed with it.
He puts on a very good show.
Yeah, he's, he is good. He is good. Anyway, so any other questions I can answer? All right then. Thank you. Assessor, but patiently waiting here, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Fran Sitkowitz, Riverside Township Assessor, here to report on what's going on upstairs. Over the past few weeks, we've had a steady stream of taxpayers coming in seeking corrections to their second installment property tax bills. Fortunately, we were able to help them pretty efficiently. And as you all know, the tax bill was due December 1st. efficiently, and as you all know, the tax bill was due December 1st. We'll still be working on correcting those exemptions. Taxpayers can go back three years for missed exemptions, so that's an ongoing situation, but whenever a tax bill goes out, everyone's aware of it, so it keeps us kind of busy. The Board of Review has sent out their decision letters for our final appeal session for 2023, so we're starting to get those calls and feedback. Some people are happy, some people not so much, but that's the way the ball bounces, and so we always encourage people just to be consistent with appealing, and they do. They, most of our regulars know the routine by now. And then the other thing that will be happening is tomorrow I will be attending the TAC Education Program for the First Amendment Audit Session. They're having a Zoom session, and I think, I think they're expecting a couple hundred people on it tomorrow afternoon.
Right.
And that's all I have to report. Any questions?
I, I heard from the spouse of one of the North Riverside trustees that he's interested in learning more about how the whole tax system works, and I think he was at one of your seminars, but he'd like a one-on-one with you, so I said I'm sure that you'd be happy to, to help, you know?
Yes, yes, and it was last year, I, I went over to their, to their residential program that they have and gave a talk, so, and I've spoken with the trustees before. I'm always willing to sit down with people.
Right. It might be good to have something like basically for village trustees or elected officials to have a better understanding of that, too, because they get the questions and they don't know how to.
Yes, yes, that's, yeah, that's a great idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor, if I may, I just wanted to thank the assessor for her hard work on my personal behalf.
You must have gotten a good result.
She was one of the happy ones.
I can't say that I jumped for joy, but I know that assessor Sitkowitz and her team worked hard to get my paperwork in order, and I did receive a letter back that I did receive some reduction, and so any assistance helps in these days, and so, thank you. Thank you. It worked.
You're welcome. I'm glad it worked. Yes, it does, I just always tell our taxpayers, it's just you have to be persistent. Sometimes you get a good analyst and sometimes not an analyst who doesn't quite see your point of view, so.
So, we can vary.
Yes, so that's, all you can do is just use the system that we have.
And the first installment for '23 are expected to go out on time, correct?
Yes, yes. In fact, they will probably be on the Cook County Treasurer's Office website any day now. The amounts, they're 50, it's 55% of what your previous year's property taxes were for the whole year, and the Treasurer's Office does a good job of getting the information out there as soon as possible. Of course, they won't be due until March 1st. Probably, they won't be mailed until February, early February, February 1st, the end of January, so, but people always have the option of just going online and paying it once, once the, once they're posted.
And that'll be March 1st due date?
Yes, March 1st due date, or the first Tuesday in March. I'm pretty sure it's March 1st or 2nd.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Fran. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, trustees. Trustee DeCostola?
Thank you, Supervisor. No report.
Trustee Carol?
Nothing today. Thank you.
Trustee Clark?
You know, as you mentioned, we had the senior luncheon last Thursday at the golf club. We had about 22 people there, and got a lot of compliments on the food and the entertainment. I had emails, and then the exercises instructor texted me the next day and told me how, everybody in class was talking about how much fun it was. So, that was good news. Last Friday, I went to Springfield and I attended a TOI meeting, and nothing really new came out of that meeting. And then I did review my information on the Decennial Committee Report, how we need to send it to the clerk's office. There is nothing.
No doubt.
So, as I said, I'd be happy to take it down there and hand deliver it so we can get it stamped.
I don't think you need to do that necessarily. I think we can mail it in. It's not a declaration, but if you insist on doing that, go ahead, but I just don't think that's necessary.
Not insisting on...
Filing the finalized report, yeah.
Yeah, there's no word yet on...
The procedure for that, yeah, not that I've heard either, so. You're ahead of the game, frankly, of most local governments that I've been involved with.
I mean, we do have 18 months from the time the committee is formed to get the report in, so. All right, well, thank you. And trustee Heilenbach?
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Mental Health Board held their 50th Anniversary Program last Saturday in the Township Hall. It was, it was, you know, it was 25 people maybe that showed up to view it, but they all had positive things to say. I thought the program was really good. It's on YouTube now, and I've talked to Lorenzo, who's the head of Riverside TV. He's assured me that he will keep track of how many people viewed this. This is one of the ways that we want to get out and get the word out about what the Mental Health Board does. As Supervisor Wilt mentioned, we did some interviews for candidates for the Mental Health Board. Very good candidates, all of them. We, between Supervisor Wilt and myself, I think we got, you know, one good one right now, and the second one coming up shortly, I think is going to be a good one, too. Very, very happy with that. I also received a call from Director of Public Safety Buckley about they have a new health advocate, if you will, for the Howser Junior High and the schools. He had a meeting with her and immediately said, you need to talk to Tim Heilenbach from Riverside Township. They've got great programs, and he has sent off an email to this gal. She's a teacher, and she has responded back that she would love to talk to us about the Mental Health Board and what, what programs we have. So, it shows that we need to continue on pressing that we have these programs, and this is a good step. Also, I'm going to be meeting with the superintendent. It appears now after the holiday because NAMI is, about the team texting. We're going to get that down into Howser. We see a need there, and the superintendent seems pretty much on board with it, but wants to talk to NAMI and myself, and I believe President Wilt will be joining us if he's available. Also, I will invite Director Buckley to give the superintendent some statistics about what the, the caseload is for our Howser Junior High and Central School kids, if they have any, any emergency calls on it, and I'm sure they do. So, I'm looking forward to that. I should have more updates in the next month, and we have no meeting this month, and that concludes my report.
And I will comment, I was also, I forgot to list that, I was also at that taping and at that celebration, and not only that day did I have many people approach me, but during the week following, a lot of people who were present said, I had no idea. There were so, there was so much help available out there, and, you know, how, how many different aspects to mental health there were, because pretty much all of the agencies were represented. So, I really encourage everybody to take a look at that, that YouTube video that Riverside TV has already posted. You can always find it YouTube, Riverside Illinois TV, and all of, all of the prior tapings are there as well. Very well. Thank you so much. Any other questions?
Oh, Tim, a lady at the senior luncheon had attended the program, talked about how much she liked it.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of compliments. I heard them that day, as Supervisor Wilt said, and my neighbor attended, and she was very impressed, and that's good. That's what we need to do is get that word out more, so these people don't go, oh, I didn't realize.
Yeah.
They can go to it and find out what we have for them.
Very good. Anything else? Then if not, we will move on to, and that included the mental health reports. You didn't, didn't have anything else to add. So, the unfinished business would be the adoption of the annual town tax levy. There was a slight mathematical correction in one spot that our accountant caught, and otherwise, but the bottom line on everything is the same as you saw last month, so the total levy for all of the, all the different taxing accounts would be, the general town tax would be $732,600. General assistance would be $55,300. The community mental health tax would be $751,81. For a total levy of $1,538,981, and that is, that is all within the, the, under, yeah, within the limits, so it is approximately 4.99%, but it's lower than the 5% maximum allowed without going into hearings and such. Are there any questions on the levy? Hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to adopt this levy.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by trustee Carol. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Carol, seconded by trustee Clark, to adopt the annual town tax levy for 2023 tax year in the amount of $1,538,981. And is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Roll call vote.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee DeCostola?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Very good. And so we're up to the approval of the warrants, which are in your packets, and trustee Heilenbach?
Trustee Heilenbach moves that the board authorize and ratify the payment of the bills identified on the general warrant for December of 2023 in the amount of $17,584.11 as presented to the board this 12th day of December 2023.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Heilenbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the general warrant for December 2023 in the amount of $17,584.11. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee DeCostola?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Incidentally, some of these may seem a little small or short of expenditures, but our last meeting was so late in the month that in some cases you had the same payee twice, so. All right, continue.
Motion by trustee Heilenbach that the board ratify and authorize payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants: utility warrant for December 2023 in the amount of $1,502.57; the payroll audit for December of 2023 in the amount of $18,378.63; the health warrant for December of 2023 in the amount of $3,109.49; grants for December of 2023 in the amount of $17,500; general assist warrant for December of 2023 in the amount of $5,013.83; and the food pantry warrant for December of 2023 in the amount of $630.12. All of the above is presented to the board this 12th day of December 2023.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Heilenbach, seconded by trustee DeCostola, to approve the following warrants for December 2023: utility warrant in the amount of $1,502.57; the payroll warrant in the amount of $18,378.63; the health warrant in the amount of $3,109.49; grants warrant in the amount of $17,500; and general assistance warrant in the amount of $5,013.83; and the food pantry warrant in the amount of $630.12. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee DeCostola?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments? Hearing none, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Carol, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Motion.